Okay, good evening everyone. That clock says it's on time, I make it a minute to go but let's start early. Welcome everybody to this meeting, welcome those in the background, we've overflowed the table. Right, item 1 is the minutes of our last meeting. Any difficulties with matters of fact or do I have your agreement aside them?
Agreed.
Thank you very much. Item 2, apologies for absence, any apologies for absence?
Yes Chairman, Councilor Gordon Smith and friend of Queen's head.
And any substitutes?
And Terry Dorbney from the tax department.
Thank you very much. Declaration of interest, any declarations received before the meeting? None, any declarations anybody wishes to make now? Thank you very much. Item 4, questions by members of the public, I understand none have been received, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. Questions from members, I understand likewise, none have been received, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. So we're straight into item 6, tackling housing fraud progress report and I'll invite Hugh Webster to pick this one up.
Good evening. One of the key drivers as you know is our effective management of our homes and part of that is tackling fraud and preventing fraud, housing fraud, and we have taken that seriously and it's been a key part of our strategy in managing our homes. Two years ago it was agreed that we could have a fraud officer for two years in terms of helping the organisation tackle fraud, prevent fraud and this report sets out our approach, how he's helped us tackle fraud and how other officers have helped reduce fraud within our housing stock. So what is social housing fraud, it's unlawful subletting, obtaining homes by deception, wrongly claiming succession, key selling, unlawful assignment and false right to buy applications. So what have we done to prevent and tackle fraud, this is outlined in the report, but basically the fraud officer and other managers within the housing team have increased awareness, we've improved our processes, we've done very thorough investigations and the fraud officer gives advice. Some of the investigations are very detailed and there's one that relates to you at the quest in the report and I've been quite heavily involved with that with the fraud officer and the amount of time that he had to take in terms of gathering the evidence, talking to barristers, because this is for someone that was totally resistant on giving up their home even though they clearly weren't living there. And oddly this person wasn't making money from their home, he just wasn't living there and wanted some kind of bolt hole and sure and Rachel will talk about her team in a minute and the T and E officer would not have the time to actually get the time it took to investigate that and retrieve that home, this person just would not got legal aid and just resisted our attempts to gain possession. In the end we did gain possession of that home. So through his work, the report confirms about the nine homes that we retrieved in the last financial year and the thirteen that we retained and that's more mostly around right to buy processes. To really back up his work is that the government did introduce the prevention of social housing fraud and the main focus of that is about subletting, that doesn't seem to be a critical thing that happens at Waverley, but the act does allow us to acquire information from banks and institutions to actually prevent fraud and tackle fraud and that's something we want to go use further and use those powers further. So going forward, I'm looking to continue with this post and we're looking to put that into the budget next year, we're going to continue looking at our processes, especially the right to buy processes and I think it's look more proactive than actually look more closely at data matching going forward and prioritising then the work of other officers in terms of who tackle housing fraud or prevent housing fraud. So Chair, would it take any questions on the paper or any other questions around the way we want to go forward in terms of preventing and tackling fraud?
It's become quite a hot topic as maybe you may have known there's a television series at the moment called Social Housing Fraud or something where it was really quite interesting where they'd done exactly what you've done, they'd had to investigate a guy's bank account and whatever and they found out he'd been living in America for six months. So it goes on on quite a wide scale and it was quite an interesting programme and I'm glad to see that we're chasing it. Any questions, comments, members? In that case can I put to you the rank, sorry, Michael, I told you.
Can I say a congratulation that I think it's, I've been involved in fraud from the benches point of view with other local authorities and I know the amount of work that has to go into the obsessive courts for example. And I think it's brilliant bit of work, it does pay because when one looks at the financial value, this is a post that I would encourage that we keep, which you say you are. And the only question I had was just my, I'm probably being thick, but the mental arithmetic looking at this annex, on the sort of seventeen eighteen total year, it seems that we had beginning of the year, one hundred and thirty-four cases to deal with, we closed one hundred and seven and have seventeen still under investigation, there's ten seems to have disappeared off the map somewhere and I've got it wrong.
Chair, this was produced by a colleague who was on leave and I did recognise, I think these two bottom rows do not seem to make sense arithmetically, which type of word?
Arithmetically.
Apologies. And what I would say is, when she gets back, I'll ask her to re-look at this and reissue this spreadsheet because I can't...
All the column has ended up.
Yeah.
They don't crossface.
If that's okay.
Yep, fine. Hi Chair.
Thank you very much Chairman, I think it's a good report, what I would like this to do is to ensure that we are putting this out into the wider community so that all our tenants, least hold whoever they are, know that we are taking this very seriously and we do get seriously, that it's no good us sitting here looking at it and we don't take it further.
Would we like to then add say to the recommendation that the committee supports the retention of the investigating officer and that the success in this area and the council's determination to continue are publicised?
Should be shared with the wider community.
Shared with the wider community, would that make sense to everybody else?
Yeah.
Okay, is that recommendation agreed in that form?
Agreed.
Thank you very much. Oxford Ridge update, Andrew please.
Thank you Chairman, yes just to highlight one or two things if I may, page twenty-three under Site A, the demolition of the existing properties on Site A went without a hitch and was completed ahead of schedule and we even had some commendations from local residents on the estate as to how it went, after much concern was expressed over dust, noise, lorries, mud, you name it, so we were pleased with that. We're now out to procure the contractor for that site, it will be the largest site that we have delivered in our house building programme, thirty-seven units and a number of things have been added into the tender documents to improve on how we were able to manage the development of Site D and so hopefully we will, each time we commence a new development, we've learnt and we're going to improve the way we do things and particularly for the local residents and the disruption that they inevitably have to experience. Mentioning Site D, we have a formal opening ceremony that will be held on Thursday with the Mayor and other members and local people will come and really celebrate the success of that first major development on Oxford Ridge which I think is something we can all be very, very proud of, that's really all I wanted to say, happy to take any questions on the brief report.
Questions, comments, Councilor Coburn, then Councilor Follows.
It's really a comment, you know, having sort of been around at the beginning of all this and, you know, the tensions that were there and as you say, we've really learnt on the job, well I say you have, you certainly have, it's really been quite noticeable when you talk to the tenants, you know, when you talk to them right at the beginning of this process and the last time we were there, I mean the whole thing had changed from, you know, doubt and antipathy at times to real support and appreciation, so, you know, once again we just got to thank the team because they've just turned the whole notion of this project around and made it supported by the community which is a win-win in every sense because once you've got community support, the whole thing just flows through, doesn't it, so well done to the team, it's been true.
Thank you Chair, first of all just like to thank Andrew and Louisa and I'm just not here for dealing with so many, many, many comments from me and many other residents, also just to reiterate Site A's demolition went ahead with so few issues and I was actually expecting there to be a huge number of concerns but actually that did go ahead without a lot of problems and I just want to say that regarding the consultation process that we're going through, I know we're going through some changes on that and so I hope that we can progress that in a way that works for the community and also for the council because there have been some, since we had our meeting last week, I have had some concerned residents as I'm sure tenants panel are also aware and so there are some things we still need to manage going forward but I hope we can learn some of those lessons as we go and particularly for the refurbs that will be coming and because there's obviously still some, very few but still the odd snagging issues which I think are actually a bit more serious than snagging from a few residents that we're still working through, but other than that I just want to say thank you for what you've done.
Councilor Seavon?
Thank you Chairman, yeah three questions, firstly Site C, the report starts off that the drop-in consultation was held, given that members of this committee had quite a lot to do with pointing, trying to point the design or preliminary designs in the right direction, could you tell us a little about how that went, were the residents happy about it? Moving on from what Councilor Follows just said, is a snagging process in place for Site D and is it going well? And the third point rather stems from the quarterly performance report that we read later on where there's mention of the refurbishment contractor getting into severe financial difficulties, would you like to comment on that and the impact that's going to have going forward on the project?
Certainly, Councilor Chair if I may, take those three. Site C, we had around thirty residents attending over a course of three or four hours and they generally liked what they saw very much, we were able to have, those events are extremely important, Councilor Follows mentioned that we were changing the way we do consultation on the ridge and it's worth just commenting on that. Since I've been here and before, we've held the Oxford Ridge Community Consultation Group once a month on the estate, we have tried in vain to get a good number of local residents to be a part of that group and so really apart from our board councillors who have done us proud, we've just had one or two that haven't always been the most helpful and certainly not representative and so we thought we need to engage with a much wider number of residents and so rather than going into all the details, we want to, really want to trail a number of different streams of consultation to get out into the community and so we can talk to more individual residents, homeowners and tenants about the progress of the project because it is big stuff now, you know, we have got some major sites coming online, so that's what we're hoping to achieve and I'm happy to, and I'll be reporting on that next, at our next committee meeting. The snagging on Site D, yes that's going well, you have a period of defects and obviously during those early days there are issues that tenants raise with us, they come straight to our customer services team, they put straight in contact, who then get the contractor in to deal with those and so largely that is going as you would expect on that kind of development. And in terms of the refurbishment contractor for the first phase, we had a major issue halfway through. When we appointed a contractor TCL, I was on the interview panel, the testimonials were excellent from housing associations and work they had done, certain things happened that you cannot predict, so halfway through the contract when essentially half of the properties were about finished, something happened within the group and essentially I think one part of the group just left. So we have had an extremely difficult job as officers, working with the tenants and the contractor and our employer's agent to get those properties that were not finished completed, it has not been easy, the tenants have been put under a lot of pressure and inconvenience, I have visited all of them personally to just show that I understand how difficult it's been for them and we are now all there bar the shouting, there are one or two issues, Councilor Follows mentions, there's one particular property, one lady there where we're doing everything we can to get her work done as soon as possible. This is something that could not have been predicted and the amount of effort and energy we have put into trying to get those contractors to finish the work, looking at the contract, seeing well can we get rid of them and get me as to do it, but it's not as easy as that and we have worked hard and we've worked hard with our board councillors to try to reassure the tenants that this will be done and it is almost done, but that has been a tremendously complex exercise and I don't know what you do about that because when you appoint a contractor with all good faith, with all good references and then suddenly it goes south halfway through the contract, it is very difficult.
Working round anti-clockwise.
The procurement of Site A, I think you mentioned at CCGs that the tenants panel myself would be involved with that, is that still in your mind?
Yes, yes.
I think you mentioned that you started the process or?
We are examining the tenders now, yes, okay.
Anyone round? Councilor Follows?
And so just a couple of other things, firstly thank you for also going to see all the tenants, that was actually something I found very surprising that not only offered to do but then you actually went and spoke to all of them, I think that was actually genuinely impressive and a lot of tenants fed back that that was a really useful thing to have done and I would also just say, is there any possibility that we can have a fixed period that we can review the new consultation setup, say within a quarter or two, just so we can just re-evaluate that it's working because although I agree the current setup means we talk in depth to a very small number of residents, those residents will obviously have some concerns going forward. I agree the new method should mean that we speak to although a little less, a lot more people because the timing I think is, I think the reason we didn't have a lot of residents there is because of the time of day it is, I mean four o'clock in the afternoon is a difficult time for, I mean I find it difficult to get there.
We did try six o'clock.
I know, I know, I know, I know you've tried.
Yeah.
And it's never going to be perfect and I think the things you've suggested should get us a broader coverage, I just want to make sure there's some kind of review, maybe there's a minute yet.
Councilor Coburn?
Just wanted to say to Andrew, don't beat yourself up about contractors not fulfilling their roles, I mean you've really got to walk through Farnham and there's delays and usually it's because something's gone pear-shaped with one of the contractors, my daughter's surrounded by a building at the moment and one has gone completely pear-shaped and the other's sailing on, I mean, you know, if you're going to start working with these people, you know, have to build in your resilience as you've obviously learnt, something else you know on your list of what I have learnt doing this project, I'm sure, you know, these people, this happens and, you know, all you can do is, as you say, is interview, do the checks and pray really after that and then if it goes through swimmingly, you know, you may be one of, you know, in the minority and I think it's terrific that, you know, you've picked up again, I really can't praise you enough for this project because, you know, it is huge compared to anything we've done, I just think it's, you know, really turned into such a good project that, you know, I really don't want to sing its praises without, you know, really getting bogged down in the little detail of taps that don't work properly because they never do, you know, first time around, but, you know, I really do think, you know, we've done a good job.
I think what made me sad was that tenants that we work with up there, a number of them are vulnerable and they don't have that level of resilience and the uncertainty of not knowing when a contractor will turn up, then taking a day off work because they're promised somebody to turn up and they don't, I think when you're dealing with individuals like that and you're trying to provide them with a home that you promised them will be lovely and refurbished and it goes south, that's what I feel and that's, you know, that's why I found it difficult personally.
Councilor Goodrich?
Yes, I'm just talking about still, we couldn't renew them from the contract but does the contract provide that we can get some recompense for all the officer time we've had to spend and the anguish to tenants and all that sort of thing?
We are looking at that.
Good.
Recommendation is to note it, can we actually note it with our appreciation for how well it's going?
Yes.
That means agreed, agreed. Thank you very much. We now move on to item eight, annual scrutiny report, Yasmin?
Thank you Chairman, some members of the committee will remember that Waverley undertook a review of its ONS arrangements in 2016 which resulted in fundamental changes to the way Waverley does scrutiny and this report reflects on the first year of the new arrangements including the successes of the new process and the improvements still to be made and I'd like to thank the councillors who were able to take part in the surveys either in 2016 or 2018 which inform this report and I'd like to emphasise though that I always welcome feedback from members concerning overview and scrutiny and so if any members of the committee were unable to complete those surveys, you've not missed your chance to contribute and I'm always willing to receive that feedback. The report observes a lot of successes of the past year but it also highlights areas in which ONS could do better and publicity and public engagement was one of these areas identified for improvement as well as involving external partners and as we continue to embed the new process, these will be two of the main areas of focus and so as the report, as first reports of the new arrangements, I invite the committee to comment on the report particularly its format and layout and to reflect on the past year of Waverley scrutiny, thank you Chairman.
Yes, thank you very much Chairman. Well some members sitting around this table were actually on the original working room with Fiona that came up with this idea and I think we have carried it through really quite well. I liked the report, I liked the way it was easy to read and also the pie charts and I thought that was really very good indeed and we ought to follow that for some of the other things. If I have a criticism, and it is this, I don't like to receive, and this came out in our original working room, if you remember, I don't like to receive a set of papers which are a hundred and sixty pages long because we don't read them and I think that is a fact that we don't have time to read them and we don't have time for it to actually register with us, so could the officers please look at reducing the amount of paper that we get for a particular subject because that way I think you'll get better decision-making personally. But on the whole, I liked the report, I liked what it told us, it's a pity not all members of the council felt they were committed to giving the survey.
Thank you, going round clockwise this time for a change?
Well, I placed a lot of the price, Chairman said, I don't actually think you can make much shorter the agenda, I mean all the detail there is necessary and I'm not quite sure, I mean it took me a couple of hours to read it because I'm used to speed reading, but, you know, I found it very helpful, you don't have to read them often, so I'm happy with it, to be honest.
Councilor Follows?
Thank you Chair, my only question was, how, you mentioned that the different councillors answered the questions now as did in the previous survey, are the numbers in each sample comparable? So I mean is ninety-three percent of the sample in 2018 a comparable amount of people compared to the sample in 2016, just so the pie charts are based on some kind of statistical fidelity on this?
There were less people, I know.
Yeah, that's my only query because I agree the pie charts all look nicer and better, yes, but is that based on a different size of sample?
Yes it is and the numbers are somewhere in there and Yasmin probably knows the difference ahead.
Page forty-three.
Thank you.
So eleven respondents in 2018 and nineteen in 2015, so there were significantly fewer.
Okay.
Coming round again, any other comments? In that case the recommendation is to recommend that we endorse it and agree any observations, recommendations which we don't have. I want to take this back to the coordinating board before it goes to the executive because it's now been through all four overview and scrutiny committees and we may want to make some slighter changes to some of them in view of some of the comments that were made and what Councilor Follows said about samples was something that we need to perhaps flesh out a little bit and look at, but generally it's going to be exactly the same but I would like to take it back to the coordinating board with the various comments from the various committees.
Could you also change the recommendation, Chair?
Yes, I think actually that would be valid, that it goes back to the coordinating board before it goes to the executive. Would that be agreed with everybody?
Agreed.
Thank you very much. We're on to now item nine, rent setting policy and Hugh is starring again.
I brought this to the committee today, we couldn't find a rent setting policy so I thought it was important that members are made aware of the policy and have any comments before it's approved. The policy that's attached to the report sets out how Waverley will calculate and charge rent for council houses, council homes, it confirms the boundaries for rent setting, it confirms there's two types of rent that we charge, social rent and affordable rent, it talks about the process of setting rents for new homes which was the reason why I think we identified that there wasn't a policy, there was issues about setting rents for new homes. It confirms the requirement to rebase review the rents of affordable rented properties when the tenants are re-let and it confirms that we're not going to operate the paid stay scheme, this was the scheme that the government introduced with this discretionary which was to charge high income social tenants an equivalent to the market rent and the whole heap of process issues around implementing that and I'm not aware of any council or any housing association implementing that policy, but I thought it was important that members were aware that we weren't progressing with that discretionary power that we had. The report is should be reviewed every three years and that's mentioned at the end of the document but it will be reviewed earlier than that because the government is at the moment consulting on the rent settlement post 2021 and it's also at consultation whether the housing regulator should set the rent level to housing association rather than legislation or you yourself as members setting the rents for social housing and so there will be a change I assume going forward on the rent setting within local authority housing. So King Chair, wanting to take any questions about the policy or the way forward?
Councilor Goodrich?
Thank you, a good report, it begs one question and that is, this policy doesn't answer the question, how do we ascertain the market rent? Because everything is, you know, not more than eighty percent so on and so forth, do we have a policy or do we have a system or do we have a method by which we ascertain what the market rent of our properties are because everything depends on that figure being sorted out and then you, on top of that, you then work out what the affordable rent is going to be, social rent and so on, should not that be included in the policy?
I believe you're correct, yes, I think it was quite clear that we will go to a valuer to make sure that we always follow that process.
So should that be in the policy?
Yes.
That in order to achieve what is in the policy so far?
Yeah.
We need a method by which we get the market rent?
I totally agree.
And how often we do it and whether we review it and it seems to me an obvious place to put it in?
Yes.
If there isn't already some feeling right about how you ascertain the market rent.
That's actually a great suggestion, thank you very much.
Councilor Seavon?
Thank you Chairman, three points, first two relate to the initial report, page sixty... page sixty, paragraph two, um, says council tenants rent, rent fund the management and maintenance of current homes, current home and estate improvements. Um, where does estate maintenance fit in? I'm just asking that question because I've got a current issue with some, some snagging that needs doing on, on the estate rather than a particular house. Is that part of this or is that elsewhere?
So, so this is a difficulty in terms of many of our properties and the challenges we have, because you, there is communal areas that we're responsible for, but most, many of the properties around that area have been right by, so there, there is no council tenants around that, around those areas. So there's, there's a difference between maintaining and perhaps bringing it up to a certain standard. So we have been investing in areas where there is a high density of council homes on those communal areas, but there is a challenge in terms of there is no council housing, but there's a bit of a housing revenue account land in there. So Rachel's team is doing some work on that, researching on how we can recharge the, uh, the freeholders for doing works in, in those areas. I think we're at quite an early stage to discuss that here tonight. But we can come at a later, uh, committee, uh, meeting on how we're looking to progress to actually maintain, improve those areas, which is housing revenue account land, but there are no council tenants around that area. I'm not sure my answer to your question is that, but I think that is a challenge in many areas across, across the, across the borough.
Point is, it's an issue under consideration rather than, than a mission, that's the main point. Um, in the recommendation here, it just says, uh, the overview and scrutiny committee considers and supports the endorsement. Do we actually mean the committee endorses? And if, if we're, we're not endorsing it, who is?
So, so I've, I've got the dedicated authority to approve policies. Is that what they're saying?
It's something, doesn't it?
Yeah, so we're, we're endorsing it. Okay, just as it's supporting the endorsement.
No, no, sorry, it shouldn't be just, just the endorsement.
Right, the real point of substance is, um, in the, um, in the policy, and it is, I, I found it an excellent policy, because it is a policy. It, it says what we want to do, there's no clutter with it. It's really good in terms of what it sets out to do. I just found the affordable rents bit a little ambiguous courtesy of one word. And that is where it says the council may seek to charge an affordable rent. What exactly does may mean? Because may mean you're permitted to do it, or it may rain tomorrow, and then again, it may not. Um, are, are we setting out to charge affordable rents for all new bills or? You know, is, is there a precursor sentence that's needed to say that, you know, we have, we, we want to keep our options open?
I think so, and I think you could probably do the fine ability of, of the scheme, but I could probably do some more, tell you more about that.
Yes, thank you. Um, yes, we, it's, we can if we want to. That's really what it is. Affordable rent was introduced by the government in two thousand and eleven. And it enabled affordable housing providers to charge up to eighty percent of market rent. Enabling them to borrow privately to fund affordable housing development because the supply of capital grant funding just about entirely dried up. For some years, the Homes and Communities Agency, now Homes England, would not fund any scheme unless the housing provider charged it an affordable rent. It's a strange title, affordable rent. But you charge up to eighty percent and that includes service charges. It is likely that that will fade away because, um, in many occasions, that rent is not affordable. You would charge an affordable rent or a rent equivalent to the local housing allowance, whichever is less. We had an instance recently where, and for our own viability to charge a higher rent makes the scheme more viable. And so because we are established partners with Homes England, we are entitled to charge an affordable rent and get grant funding. We had a situation with the scheme in Shamley Green Nursery Hill, where we were going to charge an affordable rent and we found that nobody on the register who was qualified to live in those homes could afford the rent. So we went back to Homes England and we said, uh, this isn't going to work. And they said, well, charge whatever you want to make it work and we'll still call it an affordable rent. It's a movable feast. And I think one of the comments I made on this report, let's have the may word in there because we can if we wish. It doesn't mean we will, but we have the option to. And affordable rent, these days, council, it seems to be whatever we want it to be. Does that help?
Well, it, it, yeah, it leaves me with the understanding, yeah, the same understanding as you. I just wonder whether a sentence it's not policy to say that we're, we may or we may not. That, that's kind of vague. Is, is there a statement that, you know, that the council needs to have flexibility, yes, have the option, that's all, very simple. But, but then that becomes policy because we're stating we need the flexibility. Whereas if we just go in with may, then we don't really know what the policy is.
Has the option too.
I hope that helps. Thank you.
Councillor Follos.
Uh, thank you, Chair. And first off, just wanted to agree with councillor Goodrich, that's exactly the point I was going to make about, about that. Secondly, um, I really dislike it being called affordable rents when often it actually isn't like affordable housing as a general concept. I mean, who it's affordable to is often completely ridiculous. I think I'm just about in the, the, the year where I can keep asking stupid questions because I'm still relatively new. Can you just tell me how, when, when we get a new house come into the system, how do you determine whether it's social housing or affordable housing? In terms of the rent policy that's applied?
Whether we charge a social rent or, or an affordable rent. Historically, if we wanted to get funding, we have to charge an affordable rent. And that currently, until the government released, uh, its statement about funding and bringing social rented back into and the fact we could possibly get funding for social rented. Social rent is around fifty percent of market rent. Traditional rents that we would charge, social rents. Affordable rent was this rent, and I, I agree with you, affordable was a funny title, introduced in two thousand and eleven by the government, reducing grant considerably, but housing providers could then borrow much more easily because they could charge higher rents to service the loan. Therefore, in terms of making our schemes financially viable, we have set and charged affordable rents. Because we can. Uh, and as I said, on the Shamley Green, we had to reduce that and be, and, and in the past, the Homes and Communities Agency would not have allowed you to go back to and say, well, actually, we can't, the tenants can't afford that, we need to reduce it, it was very rigid. Now there's a lot more flexibility around it. So that really is the difference. It's, 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 it's the kind of rent that you charge.
Right.
It's complicated.
It, it is complicated and the terminology doesn't help.
No, because I'm not entirely sure who is affordable for a lot of the time.
No, and, and there's no point in us building homes for our residents if they can't afford them.
No, none at all.
Absolutely no point whatsoever. So we're on, we're in a, a state of flux. We're not sure where it's going. I think the point is well made. We, we now have the option to charge affordable rent. It is thought that that will fade away in due course and we will come back to pure social rents.
Is it possible that you could provide us with a list in a future meeting that says what percentage of affordable, what percentage of market value our rates, our rents are at the moment?
Yes, I think that's something we, yeah, we spoke of earlier, yeah.
Thank you.
Councillor Councillor.
Thank you. Um, would it be helpful to have attached to this document then a technical glossary?
I'll be, yes.
Any more questions, comments? Um, it says here, identify areas for further scrutiny. Um, have we identified any or can I strike that for a recommendation? In which case.
Sorry, sorry, Chair, the, the, the actual level of affordable, what, what market rate of affordable we're charging for our rents at the moment, I think is a reasonable area of scrutiny, but still.
Is that scrutiny or is that just some facts you want supplied?
Well, I think actually we should be looking into what affordable actually means and whether we're actually providing ten, uh, housing for our tenants, so they can afford.
The officers are doing that. Officers are doing that all the time.
I'm but one member, I'm just saying that would be, I think, useful information for us to review.
So. We just don't micromanage.
Sorry, Chair. I, I think, I, I don't agree with that. I think they're, they're doing it all the time. That's why we employ the officers. Um, and if we don't like something, then we will bring it out.
I'm not saying, I don't actually know what the answer is. That's why I don't, don't know if I like it or not, is what I'm saying, because I don't have the information to make that judgment. So I'm asking for the information to make that judgment. Which is all I'm asking for.
You will get the information.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay, should we be putting something in the recommendation about market rents and about removing may? The policy to come back with that in it. I mean, the policy is fine as it goes and if it's something which we can authorize, we can say, yes, it's fine. But we'd like to see version two with a paragraph added in about how we calculate or attain the market rent, to give a full picture in one document.
And then the, the point about the may and it needs.
Yeah.
And then a glossary as well, onto the back of the page.
So we have the may, the glossary, um, add something about market rents and then bring it back to us with an explanation table of what market rents are. Are we content with that?
Absolutely.
Are we really happy?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Item ten, um, Rachel.
Thank you, Chair. See you tomorrow. Um, this report's just to update you really on the current direction of the Tenancy Estates team. I think it's a while since I've reported to the committee. Um, there's been a lot of change since my last home. We've had the introduction of the new tenancy agreement. Um, we had very successful consultation events and the tenants panel were very supportive in making sure that we had people engaged and involved with that. Um, so that's rolled out successfully. Um, the tenants all seem very happy with it. Um, and certainly a lot of the feedback from the consultation was that they were glad in the direction we were taking around recharging and being a bit more um, tough on our tenants who weren't abiding by the, the terms of their agreement. So this time last year, I was responsible for the management of a whole team, which was quite a, a, a large task. And I was fortunate that, um, we now have a team leader who manages the Tenancy Estates officers. So while I have overall responsibility for the team, Laura now manages the other officers and I'm responsible still for community development and intervention officers. And they're the officers that will, um, go and take up some of the more complex cases in partnership with our city near offices. Uh, the, the biggest change to the team is that we've lost our administration team to, we, we're, they're now part of a wider housing customer service team, so they work with what used to be the repairs team, so we've got one wider team. That's was implemented in January, so we're still in very early stages and we're working very closely. Laura in particular is working with the manager of the housing customer service team to make sure that we are providing a good service to our tenants and dealing with things more appropriately than maybe we had done before and more quickly. So there's not as a rule repetitive calls from our tenants and, and chasing. Um, in line with that, um, Laura in partnership with Deb, who's in Analisa's team, um, they have together devised a case management system on our housing management system, which we've never had before. Tenancy Estates have never had that. And it's, it's not been a small piece of work. It's not been insignificant for, for Laura and Deborah. Um, and we have, that came into fruition in March. So we're in a, again, we're in early days with that, but it now means that we record all contacts in an appropriate way. There are targets and priorities set up on the system which remind officers when to respond. Uh, that we don't feel we, we keep checking and, and because it's, um, a, an external system and we are looking, we've had a bit of support from the, um, external provider, which are called Orchard. But Laura and Deb have been checking and checking and testing and testing the system. So we're still in a state of transition really with that. Um, and there've been some even problems. We recognise that there have been maybe a couple of customers where, that have had to make more frequent contact than maybe they had before, but we're, we're learning, we're working together and it's, I feel is a really good project and it will, it's really benefiting, benefiting our customers. So please bear with us while that, we go through that. We're hoping that by April next year, we should really have it embedded as well as we can and that most of the snags will have been dealt with. Um, so we continue with that. Um, the actual, the role of the officers is ever more complex. We have much more challenging cases that the officers are working with. Significantly repetitive visits with some of our more complex and vulnerable people. With the thresholds in other services heightening, you know, we don't get the support necessarily that we have with, um, from adult social care or mental health teams. But I'm trying, now that Laura's come in to take up more of the operational role, I'm attending much more external, um, meetings and forums and trying to get partners engaged. We've now got adult social care attending our team meetings and we've attended theirs. So we're really setting up some really effective partnership working. And obviously with the police, we work very closely with them. So we're, we're really trying to, um, establish really good, um, support for our tenants who are most vulnerable and keep them in their properties. Um, but we are using enforcement powers much more extensively than we ever had. The legal budget has significantly increased since I've been in post because we are using our, our legal colleagues for, um, to, to tackle cases that previously we, we haven't really dealt with effectively. So, excuse me, that's really good. Um, the intervention officers have just completed training so they can, they can undertake minor aids and adaptations to our properties. They can measure up, they can order the works and arrange for the works to be done. So that will cut out some, um, necessity for using an external O T for the minor aids and adaptations. So that's brilliant. And they do all the aids and adaptations, but also they pick up the more complex cases with the officers as well. Um, and finally, community development. Um, you can see, I mean, I've put down that we're developing. We, we have a gardening service and we have now taken on responsibility for trees in, in our tenants' gardens and in the communal areas, working very closely with the, um, tree officer to, um, encourage our tenants to tackle, um, trees and shrubs that maybe are overgrown, providing a service that we're doing, a, a service which has just been piloted where we will pay for the cost of the trees, but then we'll recharge in them as we do with the gardening service. And we are now also, because I don't know if you're aware, but in the new tenancy agreement, tenants, it specifies specifically that tenants are responsible for their dividing fences. So we've just set up a pilot. We're literally on the first couple of properties where people can't afford to replace their fences and we will subsidize that, but then we will recharge and, and, um, replenish, replenish the cost for that. So that's what the community development officers are focusing on. What I would like to, sorry, advise you is there is, um, point two under community development says about, um, assisting the surveyors and inspectors. So the community development officers have been taking on quite significant infrastructure projects. Um, doing things like procurement and planning applications, things that they weren't really set up to do, but they, they took that on from the um, property services, um, division for a while, service for a while. What's happened is with the new asset manager, those bigger projects are, are going to go back. But it means that we've got more, um, time now for the community development officers to focus on the communal areas. So going back to what councillor Seaborn asked about the communal areas, we're going to use the community development to go out and we're really going to start focusing on the, um, the, uh, balance between council tenants and leaseholders and owner occupiers and look at how going forward we can set up some kind of charging. We're in the early days. We've got, um, in addition to that, we've got a utility officer who we've, we've brought in on a temporary basis to identify where all our, um, communal meters are for services, for utilities, because we aren't quite clear where they all are, as are the energy providers. So we've brought them in. And again, we'll be looking back so that we are getting some kinds of income from the communal facilities that people are using. So that will be, that is a, a change from point two. That is recently with the new asset manager, the bigger projects are going back. But the community development officers will still identify the areas that might be parking, lighting, things like that. Um, so we've been through a period of change. We're still transitioning. I think the team's come on a long way in the last couple of years, but we're continuing on our journey. So I'd just like to ask the committee for support to continue as we are. Thank you.
Nice, Chair.
Thank you. It, it seems, Rachel, that you've undertaken quite a lot and there's a lot of work that you've done that you're going to be continuing to do. I think it would be helpful that once you have got the team bedded down, if we could have a report saying who does what, so that we know roughly what is happening. Because it's been a good report tonight, but I'm going to forget it. And I, I think that you've done so much good work on this, that we need to make sure that we've got something in writing that we can review every step and say, well, how has that worked? Because sometimes what happens is you can set something up, it's complicated, but then you have you have to drop something, but you can't do it all.
That's true.
And we need to know what works and what doesn't. Would you agree with that, Chair?
Yes, I do totally agree with that. Councillor Rich.
Yes, very good report.
Thank you.
Um, I just beg the question, it was something that councillor Seaborn said earlier, whereby all the council tenants, for example, have now moved in there. It's all third party owners, all the freehold, all around. And we are going in to sort out the communal areas that serve all those freehold properties. It seems to me that we should be selling it to all the freeholders or setting up a housing, uh, residence association or something and offloading that. I mean, while we've got our own tenants there, yes, we must be in control. Why are we still in control when we've got rid, not rid, when all the residents have exercised their right to buy or whatever? It seems to me we shouldn't be wasting our valuable officers' time administering those communal parts. And I, I just, they've just asked me the question, should we be looking in the long term for offloading?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I think we have been looking at legal ways of doing it. And I think you actually come up with perhaps one I haven't thought of and what you haven't thought of is about that we sell, sell it as a community asset to that community and that might be something we put on, put on, on, on the workload. So that's what I was saying, we are, um, working with legal on, on perhaps other solutions, but as you're saying, the, the best solution. I mean, we, I mean, the community team, for better word, have been offloading assets to, especially our community rooms. And this may be, and you may have prompted that that's another way to actually deal with these green spaces that really are, are not really owned by, by anyone and that we somehow transfer that to, to, to that, that other community. So I think we can take that away. And as I say, sometimes come back with a report on how we're going to approach these spaces. But you're so right. I mean, that, you know, these, the, the way, the salaries of these officers are paid by, from the rents. And as I say, they should be serving the tenants, not the people that don't pay the rents and, um, and exactly. So that's, that's what we're trying to do and that's what a lot of their work. As I say, we don't want too long a report, but thi- this team, the community development team, have managed to offload a number of assets already to communities that not only offload, but it's actually a benefit to the communities. Um, that, for example, U H S Parish Council have taken over the community room there. The, the community room at Wake, Wake, Wake Court, again, we transfer to, um, a charity as well. So I think I had a thought, I'm not sure the team had thought that, of actually transferring the land to, to the, to that local community. And we will look into that as well. So thank you.
Councillors.
Thank you, Chair. I'm just noting the, um, the, 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 the age of applicants that you're dealing with, the, the demographics that you've got in that last graph. I'm just curious if, um, next time you see one of those reports, we could also see a, a pie chart of the demographics of all the tenants. So I don't know whether that age profile mirrors what we see across the borough's tenants. And secondly also, could you just, um, let us know what sort of mechanisms people are using to actually engage with your, with you and your team? Because I'm, um, is it literally by email, phone, or is there a customer service portal online? Because I think also I'd be curious to see the levels of engagement and the ratios of those different mechanisms.
So there are some, there are some parts of the service that can be accessed on, online.
Yeah.
Um, but we do have emails and, um, predominantly it's phone calls and emails, old people coming in, I guess.
Okay.
Um, we have, we have talked about and we are thinking about with other teams, and this is in early, um, we've kind of moved from having hubsing and, and services out in different communities and areas and, you know, and we've centralised it into the offices here. So we're now looking again at, because of vulnerable tenants things, about trying to do some consultation out in the communities again. So maybe you'd have a rent officer and a T and E officer and potentially a housing benefit person out in. So going forward, there might be other ways for consulting, but I appreciate what you're saying about whether we can provide a bigger sun, how people consult us.
Yeah, because I'm actually, my, my guessing on this is seeing other things in a previous authority where I did some contract work a long, long time ago, is that where you've got predominantly in person and on the phone. It skews the age demographic to the upper end of the spectrum. And as a result, you're missing a big chunk of vulnerable people below the age of forty.
So that applicant.
Yeah.
So it is, it is, is around aids and adaptations.
Yes.
So there will be a higher demographic of all the people on.
Right, okay. So there are other factors.
Yeah, yeah.
Kind of to search out how well access, so part of the reason why we've set up the customer servicing team is that people can phone in, have, hopefully have the majority of their queries answered, which releases the time for the T and E officers to be out in the communities so they aren't S bound. And that's what we, and from my, from my, uh, looking at what's happening, that's what they are, they are out there. So especially the vulnerable people is about us visiting people in their homes.
Okay.
Councillor Dan.
Um, I just wondered about the, um, aids and adaptations budget. Um, and there seems to be quite a, a, a large number of, um, inquiries, um, on the, uh, the, um, bar chart there. Um, I just wondered whether you are able to say what percentage of the budget, um, is still available, um, as you're reviewing it currently?
So I don't actually hold the responsibility for that budget. It sits under the property services team. So we work together. So I kind of both, we work together so we look at, um, we look at, uh, the, sorry, the, um, aids and adaptations that need to, but we're also looking at the policy at the moment. Because what happens is we, we take, we, we're quite good with managing the budget or we have been, but what happens is we sometimes get some quite significant pieces of work. And obviously if you've got three households that need quite major adaptations, that can take a third of the budget, one, one actual. So I'm sorry, I don't have the figures, but I can, I can get the figures to you. Like I say, it's a different manager that, that is responsible for that, if that's okay. You sure?
Absolutely.
I mean, I mean, we, we have a substantial aid and adaptation budget, um, and we've never turned anyone down five years of being here because if we would just ask for, for more money because it's such a large area. As Rachel says, usually what happens when we, if, if we start to use all the budget is because of one big, with big, um, project that we need, you know, to build an extension or something. But we do have an aid and adaptation policy in terms of who's, who, who can apply for it. It's not means tested, but the works are limited to thirty thousand pound, which is in line with the private sector aid and adaptation policy. So we try to align those two policies. So there, so we, we, we do not, there's, as far as I'm aware, we have not needed to say to anyone, we can't do it because we haven't got the money. If, if that's done, that reassures you.
Yes, I was just thinking there's a high number of cases with obviously a, an aging demographic, whether or not this budget is being utilised or whether or not it is actually increasing and getting.
We, we have increased the bu, we've had increased the budget recently, but as I say, it's, can be distorted because you can have one large project, um, and going forward. So, yeah, the budget for that area has been, as well, generous, gen- generous in terms of we've, we've always been able to meet the, the need that the officers identify.
Yeah. Thank you.
Um, with councillors, very good update. Well done, Rachel.
Thank you.
Um, just on page sixty-nine at the top, where it mentions about the tree works.
Oh, yeah.
Is it just for vulnerable tenants or is it for everyone?
Well.
Or is everyone has trees in their garden, isn't it?
Yes. And what, what we're trying to do is when properties are allocated now, so the voids team try to, um, cut down the trees, is it? Um, and we also say to people, it might sound a bit harsh, but we'll say, look, can you afford, you need to maintain your garden, that is part of taking on a tenancy. And actually, if, if you've got these large trees, it may be you need to look at another property that's more suitable. But what we're trying to do, and it's been difficult, we have limited, no, so, sorry, unanswered to your question.
So obviously we're going to.
No.
It's going to repay it back, obviously.
It's not limited to vulnerable people. And what we were trying to do.
Which we're taking out there, yeah.
Is we're trying to means test, um, households, but that is an ongoing process. At the moment, we have, we provided, we've limited the cost to around three hundred pounds. So we.
That's reasonable.
So we're subsidising it, we're not completely.
Sure.
On the trees.
Yeah, yeah. That's good, yeah, yeah.
Um, and we were hoping to means test, but that has proved quite difficult, looking at, we, we haven't found any other places at the moment, local authorities that are undertaking these kind of services. So we're quite innovative in that way. And we've looked to our colleagues in, um, the benefits team around means testing and, and citizens advice and it's been quite difficult. So that's still a progress in that, but we didn't want to wait and stop the service.
No, of course.
Starting. Because while we waited to try and get the means testing in place, so.
Tree, so it's very expensive, isn't it? You get a couple of trees down, oh.
And we are, we are, yes, yes, and it can be. We've had, I think, a couple that were priced at around eight hundred pounds, but we're using different, we're using proper procurement and we're using, you know, the cheapest option. And we're taking advice from our, um, tree officer because there are issues around all sorts of things around a price for the actual works or day in prices and so we keep the best rates.
Sure, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Rachel. Thank you.
Any more questions, comments? Councillors, the recommendation is that the committee considers and supports the direction of the team. Is that agreed?
Agreed. Thank you.
Um, on to item eleven, overview of damp in council houses. Analisa.
Okay, good afternoon. Or good evening, so. Um, so this report, um, you may recall from our last meeting when you reviewed the asset management strategy, that there's an outstanding action about developing a strategy for tackling damp in council homes. Um, so voila, there we go. Um, so the, eh, the draft strategy is, um, in annex one for you. The aims of the strategy are to maintain dry, warm and healthy homes for our residents and also to work in partnership with tenants to resolve issues of damp and mould. Um, if anybody's ever had a damp issue in their house or if their family members have lived in private rented accommodation or different types of housing, it can be quite difficult to get to the root cause of, of condensation, damp and mould. Um, the strategy also identifies the legal aspects, um, about the tenancy agreements and also identifies the common causes of damp and mould. And the approach that we're going to take through the, um, through the strategy, as I say, is working in partnership with tenants and accurately identifying the issue. Um, too often we'll have repeat visits, um, back and forth, different, um, inspectors or surveyors or even, um, specialist companies all going to, to try and tackle the same issue. We want to try and simplify that as much as we can. Um, and we'll also look at preventative work we can do and monitor issues as well. Um, within annex two, there's, um, a draft guidance note that we're hoping to circulate with to tenants. Um, that is in development, um, where it's not been through our tenant volunteer panel yet and it's not been through our communications team either, but it's to give you an indication of the type of thing that we want to, to publish. Um, so I really appreciate your feedback, particularly the tenant panel, as to whether this strategy and the guidance note actually reflects our aim to work in partnership to try and, I think historically, there may have been a little bit of blame of, around condensation, damp and mould. We really want to strip that away and, and give clear advice and tackle issues where they are arising.
Councillors, comments, questions?
Good report.
Yeah. I mean, that. Yeah, it's a good report and I think, you know, the thing that we've got to concentrate on is, not, I appreciate not the blame game, but is it our fault or is it the tenant's fault?
Inherent in the property and the.
And yes, if it, that is our fault. So that if it's purely a tenant that just doesn't do the right thing, otherwise it's perfectly okay. The house next door identical is, has no doubt problems, but this one does. And the sooner the tenant appreciates that they've got to do something, the sooner the better. Um, but if it is our fault, then sooner the better we start doing what we have to do to ensure, whether it's repointing or whether it's fixing the roof or whatever, the sooner we do it, the better. Um, for the tenants' property. Therefore, being diagnosing what the problem is, is absolutely right. And I think the policy is very helpful and I think annex two document is, is very helpful and helps the tenant look at whether it's a benefit or not.
And we've also, um, developing a script for the housing customer service team so they're asking the right questions about the damp and the mould, you know, all, all people, there's technical things that, I've maybe a little bit of my head, but there's still going to be a script to help them, um, identify earlier on.
Adrian, then I'll cut you, right?
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I agree with, uh, Councillor Goodrich, it was a very good document. I think, I think the annex two is very good. I believe there's a YouTube video as well, I haven't seen it, there's a YouTube video as well, which is very helpful, I've seen it, it looks good. Um, just one sort of query maybe can, I don't know, explain it. Um, six, page seventy-nine on the Landlord and Tenant Act, mirror to the bottom, it said, um, and it says about therefore the mere existence of damp does not automatically mean there's disrepair, has occurred. Um, it mentions about con, con, compensation sort of thing, so that, so there could be damp, but there's no disrepair. So this is a bit, I don't, it's a bit of a, I'm not quite sure exactly what that means or is that, that, that. So it's a tenant entitled to compensation, but there may be damp, but doesn't automatically mean disrepair, so.
Sorry, you asked page seventy-nine.
Yes, yes.
Oh, you're with the Environmental Protection Act.
No, it's the Landlord. It's the Landlord. It's just, it's a bit.
Oh, I, oh, the one of them, sorry.
Perhaps there should be a separate paragraph, but.
It'll be ambiguous really what it means exactly.
No, I mean, it's a full stop, but perhaps to make it clearer, it should have been, this last image should be a separate paragraph, but what it's saying is that yes, because they're damp, it does mean it's automatically disrepair, full stop, but it's that, 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 that thought.
Okay, okay.
And then it goes on that such an eleven of the act is legally enforceable, um, obligations under which tenants are entitled to compensation.
Right, okay, so.
So they're not linked, both two points.
Oh, okay. I think that's what confused me is they've got one after the other. Okay, thank you for clearing that up. Thank you. Um, yeah, the document, that's a really good document, I think. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Seaborn.
Thank you, Chair. Yep. Excellent document, really thorough, very impressed with the amount of research that's gone into the legal aspects of it. We clearly understand where our obligations are, are set out. Um, really, my, one question, what next? If you look at the introduction, it says develop the strategy for tackling dampness across the council stock, including developing a policy and procedure for dealing with damp related issues. And you've done that and gone well beyond just the strategies, um, phase. This has the, seems to have the policy and the procedures, although it's not actually spelt out, but I, I just, rather than us endorsing a draft strategy today, it'd be nice to know where this is going to go so it's tidied up so that we end up with a policy which says what we want, the procedures to make sure it happens continuously and all the other stuff that is described in here to make sure that the procedures, uh, ensure effective interaction. I'd comment on that just briefly.
So, um, so now that we produced a document, it is around now introducing an action plan to implement this to make sure it's all put in place. Uh, and that's what we're going to start to develop from now, from now, now that you, if there's general agreement that this play forward and any other comments we're taking into account. So we tidy up, as you said, tidy up the documents and then have a, an action plan to actually implement all of this. So we can give feedback to the next committee or the committee after that, how, how that's progressing. Um, but, yeah, uh, kind of after the, the, the team that's, uh, have been working on this, I said, we'd be sort of preparing this, you know, prepared for the meeting. So there's a lot of stuff in here that we, we, we said we're going to do and, and, and now we need to, to actually start to actually deliver.
Councillor.
Yeah, um, again, I mean, I endorse everything everyone said, it's, it's very, very good. I mean, surely it's a monitoring process we're talking about. You know, you have a target of absolutely no dampness in any house, whatever, for any reason, and then you, you measure yourself as you go through, uh, with what we've got at the moment and, you know, hopefully, uh, you know, fewer and fewer properties with this, this problem. And presumably we'll get better at diagnosing the problem. Um, we all know the different types of damp, we've all lived through most of them at some point. Um, and, you know, once we've, you know, got really good at analyzing, diagnosing and dealing with it, with a bit of luck, you know, the monitoring should show that and, you know, we not only have an action plan that we deliver in, we can, you know, achieve success and celebrate that success at the end.
Did you tell anyone?
I mean, just to agree with the, uh, Councillor in that, yes, it is about having tighter[1747.04] I mean, just to agree with Castle in that, yes, it's about having tighter processes and it's about that monitoring and more structure. I mean, we had structure, we had that before, but I think it's to recognise that we can do much better in that area. So that's a good one.
Very good report and it's very clearly defined in responsibility for damp condensation, but I don't see anywhere drying damp clothing, which is...
It is in there, there's...
I must have probably tried that, I've only been giving this today, so...
Don't write it on your radiator.
In previous experiences I've had, invariably, a lot of the council houses had their windows and they weren't properly ventilated, but they still insisted on drying their clothing just about anywhere in the house, which does cause a problem. And that's one of the items that I wanted to bring up, but obviously, well done.
Castle, come on. Were you just smiling at me or did you want to...
No, I was just thinking.
People don't smile at me very often, so I was quite...
It's great to see that we're tackling this and I was, annex two too, obviously is an educative thing to so tenants know the do's and don'ts. One of the things I was just thinking, perhaps to make it slightly more accessible to everybody, is the use maybe of graphics, you know, perhaps a little bit more than just all text, because the do's and don'ts, sometimes, you know, it might be easier to have graphics and perhaps flashcards and things like that can be useful for the most prominent issues for tenants. Other than that, it's a really good report.
Any more questions, comments, councillors? If we approve this today, does the draft become your final report or are you going to do a bit of titubating to it?
I think we will target...
Okay, we'll leave the word draft in there then. So the recommendation is that we support the draft strategy for responding and that we look forward to an implementation action plan coming forward to the committee. Is that agreed, committee members?
Agreed.
Thank you very much. I now call upon Chief Executive, Tom Hallward, to deal with item twelve, performance management reports. Tom.
Good evening, Chairman. Good evening, councillors, colleagues. I'm very pleased to bring to your attention the quarterly performance report in the new format. We've been modifying the format in collaboration with council managers and in consultation with the overview and scrutiny chairman as well. Clearly, what you're used to seeing every quarter is a report focused very much on service key performance indicators for the areas within your remit. What this report does is broaden that out, so it does cover the key performance indicators, but it also reports on progress on service plans, internal order recommendations, complaints, workforce data and the other range of performance. So it gives you a broader picture of the council's performance. Clearly, so all four committees will get the same report, but clearly you'll want to focus on those areas of the council business within your remit. What you'll also see is increased narrative, so rather than just numbers and charts, a greater textual narrative that hopefully gives more context and greater transparency for readers as well. And within that narrative, heads of service in particular will be writing about the things that have worked well within the past quarter, but also the things that are off track, the things that are keeping them up at night, the things that are bothering them for the next period of time as well. Clearly, this is the first version of this, so there are further improvements to make in response to your feedback. The most important thing really is that this is fit to purpose, it needs to be fit to purpose for management information and for us to take action where we need to, but also it needs to be fit for purpose in terms of your role, in terms of oversight and scrutiny of the housing areas of the business in particular. So your feedback on formatting content is going to be very important. Overall, the council's performance is good and you can see further detail on all aspects within the report itself, so I'd be really interested in your feedback both on the content but also on the new changes as well. Thanks very much.
Councillors, any immediate thoughts? Vice Chair has quite a few points. While she's making them, can I just ask you to cogitate on a couple of things? Page one, two, three and one, one, nine, there are lots of up and down arrows. Do you all understand whether an up arrow or a down arrow is good or bad? Do you understand the history blips and bumps? And do you understand what units are in the value column? If you will cogitate on that and give us your thoughts. And do you think that this is giving you more of what you want than the previous report or less of what you want than the previous report? Those are the questions I'd like you to cogitate. Vice Chair, over to you.
I'm sorry, Tom, but I don't like this report. This, I'll go to all about this committee in particular. This committee spent a lot of time before we actually raised the new ONS system, looking at things like this. And we decided that what was better for us in monitoring this was in fact to have just that section of a report which told us about the various things that we wanted to know, not what somebody thought we wanted to know, but these were things that we particularly wanted to know. This report to me reminds me of something we had many years ago, where in actual fact we had big report and then we lost what we wanted to do within it. And, you know, we suddenly found somebody was discussing indicators to do with the environment. Well, sorry, guys, that is not our remit. Our remit is to look at the housing ones that were important to the work that we do within housing. And it seems to me that whilst it's a nice looking report, and I do understand where you're coming from, that in fact what I would like to see is that this big report with everything in it is a report for the executive and full council. The report which talks about the housing indicators, like have we checked the gas valves recently or what have we done, is a smaller report that's extracted from this that comes to this committee. And that to me would make far better use of the work that we're doing and give us far better answers. So I'm sorry, I was quite boring when you were touting this around. So I, and maybe it's disappointing that I can't actually endorse this, but there's an awful lot of words in here. I think the comment that's been made by the chairman is valid, what do some of these things mean? I mean, for example, if we look at page one oh four, this is just an example, and we've got the performance indicator status, thirty-three per cent on this particular pie chart is in red. Now, I want to know that where you've got things that are in red, on page one hundred eleven here, environment, and what are we doing about it? You know, nothing tells me here what we're actually doing, we're just showing what the result is. But I want to know what we're physically doing to improve that figure. And I thought that when we used to have our small groups here, we actually addressed that, we actually scrutinised it and said, this is a problem, what offices are you doing to ensure that problem doesn't exist? And I don't think this nice glossy report actually helps us there. I think the other thing that doesn't help is down the side you've got the code, but it doesn't tell you what the code is, what does it mean though? What is HR one? You know, what is PG two C? I mean, they're probably down there, but you're looking first of all at the first part and then you think, oh, look, it's down bottom. So I'm sorry, I'd like to see something which is easier to read, easier to understand, and if all the chairman are happy with this, well, good luck, chairman. So I'm sorry, Tom, I can't actually go along with this. Thank you, chairman.
Adrian. On visual inspection, just having a quick look, you know, not taking every minute of it in, like, it just comes across as overcomplicated. Just, I think, Castle Frost is right, it doesn't necessarily give us the direct information that we used to. I think it just comes across as overly complicated, I think the codes are unnecessary, but I can understand it relates to the bits underneath, but I have no idea what the value is, exactly what, you know, the history chart I can see, the ups and downs, I mean, you know, you do need to understand what that means, you know, so. But apart from that, you know, it's okay.
Councillor Seaman.
Yeah, thank you, chairman. Your points for cogitation, totally agree with, I don't know whether, does that mean...
I didn't say anything, I just asked.
All right, so I would like to know whether a number going up means the number's going up or the trend is upwards, that, you know, it could mean improvement or it could mean deterioration. That's just a question of putting some keys in to help us with that. Exactly the same in the history, you know, how long does that history apply to and are these schematic or actual graphlets? But I had a go at this last week and I'm erring on the side of it takes, it takes a while to learn how to use something that's presented in a new way and I'm prepared to give a little bit of benefit of the doubt on this while I become familiar, because I found doing this for the second time, it already started to get a little easier, largely because I just focused on the housing bits today rather than the whole thing. On the housing bits, page one, one, eight, the first bullet point there, I'm struggling to understand why we have more accounts in credit now with a lower total value averaging one hundred and fifty-four pounds per account compared with last year when we had fewer accounts of the total value of considerably more with an average of one hundred and eighty-three pounds. I'm not, maybe I'm not understanding what I'm seeing there, but the numbers look a little strange.
It's all to do with the one per cent rent reduction?
No, you tickle with one per cent, that doesn't come up with these numbers.
So could you repeat your question, I didn't quite catch it.
Well, if you look at the first bullet on page one, one, eight.
Yeah.
Right, so this year we have three thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven accounts in credit to a value of five hundred and eighty-three thousand. Last year we had slightly fewer accounts in credit to a total value of a hundred thousand pounds more.
That was because we refunded the water money.
Right, okay, so notes to that effect would help there, because it is a large number. I went for the one per cent, but it didn't help.
Yeah, no. That was my immediate reaction.
We refunded the water rate money.
And I think, you know, the helping comments will help this out enormously and maybe help it converge on something that's more acceptable to colleagues. On page one twenty, bottom column, the workforce, we know it continues to be difficult to recruit technical roles, a bit more detail on that would help us understand the scale of it. You know, sorry?
I'll stop.
Well, yes, the scale, the cost and the number of items that we can't do properly because we don't have the quality technical people to do it. I'm very aware of this in detailed scrutiny work and if it's an issue, then we need to understand exactly how big an issue it is, then maybe we can help, or at least we can simplify it. So thank you very much, Jim.
Councillor Follows.
Thank you, chair. A couple of things, first off, can you, long term versus short term trends, there's no definition of the periodicity of that in the report and that was something that just stood out. I actually don't think it's a bad report in terms of presentation or what it's saying and it's quite clear, I'm pleasantly unburdened with the past, so I don't know what we've changed from here, so for me it looks fine. What I would say is I agree with one particular point of Councillor Frost's, which is a little surprising for me, that where we've got those comments, we've got a lot of those reds above, but actually in the comments, it's actually pretty ambiguous as to which areas of red it's commenting about. I think we've gone to the effort of having a code number, explaining what the code is, then we should also have an equally coded reference to what is being done to address those reds, and that would be a much more easy way for us to see what you're actually doing about it. Other than that, it looks good, mate.
Thank you, chairman. Yes, I'm sort of somewhere in the middle here, I'll give it more time, but I really do think it's form over content at the moment, I really do, you know. To me, as somebody who's spent her life giving information, information has to arrive at the person we're aiming it at with very few questions. I mean, if you've got questions, then on the whole, you haven't done your job a hundred per cent properly, you know. And I just feel, I'll certainly give it more time, maybe it'll feature my age, Councillor Follows. But, you know, I just, I just find, you know, jargon has always turned me off, you know, I just find jargon appalling and I don't think it's necessary. I think the English language is varied enough to get away without using jargon. And I just think there is a little bit too much here of form over content, I really do. I think if you've got a good report that gets the information to us as councillors quickly, accurately and without having to follow a whole lot of other stuff and look for keys and have half-hearted sort of notes, then I think we could do a better job. You know, I'm not quite as swingeing as Councillor Frost or quite as fulsome as Councillor Follows. I think there's, you know, I'm all for change, but I really do think this is going to be quite a challenge. I don't find it clear particularly at all.
Councillor Townsend.
Thank you. I found it useful to have, to be able to compare across different departments, having a look through, I thought that was quite good actually, to be able to do that. I must admit, I agree with some of the comments by Councillor Seeburn and Councillor Coburn and Councillor Follows in that when looking through the different areas, say on page one hundred and one, and it may be my lack of familiarity with this report, but not that I was looking at finance, but just as an example, this is the first one I've come to, was that there are some values there and there are some percentages within the pie chart area, which maybe it's me, but it was slightly confusing to have those mixed up within the pie chart. Also, I do agree that there needs to be some sort of information about the value and explanation, but it is getting familiar, you know, becoming familiar more with this type of report. On the formatting side, there are a couple of bits and bobs, you know, where letters have dropped off and the tables needs to be tidied up a bit. And please, if a table goes across two pages, can we have the column headed pages repeated? Because it's very annoying having to flick backwards and forwards between those areas. But I think, yes, an explanation of the actual pie charts, codes and the values would be absolutely helpful. Thank you.
Castle.
Yeah, it's different and one can always look at something that's different and say I like it, I like the way it was always done. Personally, then, when we were talking about how much paper we have that the committees, to have the whole report, it may be interesting, but I'm really only interested when I'm in the mode of housing overview and scrutiny to concentrate what appear to be pages one hundred and eighteen to the end, which seems to be the housing bit. I see we repeat legend paragraph on every single section, I think. And I think the legend hasn't changed, but I may be wrong, so we are repeating the paragraph about legend, which says what red and amber and green and later on green are in a colour. Is that necessary? Secondly, I am assuming on the housing that all the KPIs that we've looked at in the past are all here still, albeit in a different format, because in the past we might have an inch and a half per key indicator, now we have two lines in effect, the green tick with the H two and whatever it is with all the arrows and then the one line on below it, which tells you what H two is. We don't get as much information, I can suggest, when it comes down to each individual housing department. And I have to say, when I said how long it took me to read the agenda, it only took me two hours, I didn't read, I flipped through the whole report till I got to housing, because I felt that that's what I was here for. Then it does make the question, who sees the whole report? Do we need the executive board to see the whole report? And should we be seeing it as a full council? I don't know, there needs to fly another bit of water paper. So it's getting the balance between having perhaps a little bit more information on the area which we're scrutinising, against not having all the stuff that wasn't related to us. I know in the past, on overview and scrutiny, as we've tried to say, well, don't burden us with stuff we don't look at, particularly when I was chair of these things, that meant the committee go trolling off about planning and you say, no, it's nothing to do with us, that's not this overview and scrutiny, don't look at that, you may have been supplied with it, but just forget it, it's nothing to do with us. And there's going to be a temptation that we start looking at other sections in here which we shouldn't be looking at or commenting on the sections we shouldn't be looking at. Therefore, don't supply us and you can't comment.
What about the chair?
Councillor Follows.
Tiny, tiny question, and it comes from someone, Councillor Coburn, said, who actually is the intended audience for this document, for some interest? Because it does, I think, shape who, how it's written or should shape how it's written. Because I'm not sure whether it's for us, whether it's for officers, whether it's for authorities, I mean, who is the audience for this?
So chairman, would you like me to respond to those together?
I think we've been right round the table, so I think, over to you, Tom.
Yeah, thank you very much and thank you councillors for these comments. One councillor asked how the other... One councillor asked how the other scrutiny committees received it, and I have to say this is the fourth of the four, and they received it very well. I think the point about audiences is important, and one of my perceptions was that our former reports were very narrowly focused, they only looked at certain key performance indicators, and they didn't give the whole perspective on how the council was performing. So, they fitted a certain purpose, but they didn't cover performance in its widest sense, and we saw part of the picture, not all sides of the coin, if you like. I think the focus here also is that we have one composite report that certainly managers can take action on, that you in your scrutiny role can then oversee and comment on, and that we can publish in transparent ways to the public. And by incorporating all these other aspects of performance, I think that goes some way to meeting that transparency aim. Clearly, I think of most of the comments that we've had that were critical, were really around format, about the key, about the colours, the formats, and even the nature of the commentary. I've said in my perception is that the commentary here is actually more meaningful than the commentary in many of the former reports. They give a great deal of context and often, in fact, that key point that one of you mentioned about what are we actually doing about it, well, under each section of those performance indicators, you do have a commentary which hopefully does say that, but I'm sure that Mr Smith and Mr Wagstaff in this particular area can take on board any further comments in there, but I think it does a lot of that, but it needs to do more, that's fine. In terms of what this committee is after, particularly the housing section, I'm very happy for this committee if it wishes just to have the housing section of the report, and also for us to put more detail or have more indicators of the particular indicators that you're interested in. As I say, it's got to meet, it's got to be fit for your purpose as well as for mine and for everybody else's. So, if that is the will of the committee, and then, whereas the other committees found it helpful to look at the whole picture, although, you know, it is down to the chair then to make sure that the discussion focuses appropriately, and I have to say, they did, at least for the first round. If your committee actually wants to take a slightly different tack and only have those pages that are specifically within your remap, then I'm sure we can facilitate that, but we can also take on board your comments and improve the formatting, content, detail, additional points, there's no problem there at all in doing that. What I wouldn't want to do is start creating lots of separate reports, because that's what you had before, you had four separate reports, you had officers running around, cutting and posting things from Excel and all sorts of different bits of software, creating graphs all over the place, and actually the process of compiling it became quite difficult. So, I'm pretty sure we can find a good way that fits all our purposes and that for quarter two, it'll be a lot better and that we will refine it further. I do want to address the point about roles. So, this is, yes, certainly it's for management to take action on, and we will be considering these quarterly reports as a group of service heads and directors and chief executives together than it is for the scrutiny committees. It is not really intended for the full council or for executive. The functions of those bodies are not scrutiny, the function of this body is scrutiny. So, in terms of performance, it does sit squarely within the overview and scrutiny committees, so you're the key stakeholder in terms of between the operational part of the council and the public. Then, of course, if you have specific recommendations that require policy change or strategy attention, then it can go on to executive. And you'll see that reflected in the recommendation that's to you, because it asks you if you have any specific recommendations to senior management or the executive as appropriate. It's not a given that everything you want has to go to the executive, actually, we can just agree an awful lot of that already by and large in terms of operational functions that you're scrutinising. Most of the time, managers will be able to respond and will be able to address the issues you raise. If there's specific policy issues, we may well need to then take them to executive, so that's fine. So, I hope that's covered most of it, but overall, I'm actually really heartened by the discussion you've had, I'm not at all phased by the criticism, I was expecting it. So, you didn't disappoint, it's very important that we take that on board, I completely agree with things around, you know, reading out jargon, it's always very difficult, isn't it, to do that, we need to work on that. Presentation, definitely we can work on that, where the keys work, look at the content of the commentary, I think, personally, I think we're heading in the right direction. And as I say, if you as a committee only want to receive the couple of chapters that fit for housing, that's perfectly fine by me, you will obviously have access to the wider report as councillors if you're interested in that, because the other committees want the full film, so that's perfectly fine as well.
Can I just say a few things? I went to all the overview and scrutiny committees that looked at this report, and I went there for two reasons. One, I wanted to see what the various reactions were, and I took a vow of silence that I would say nothing, either there or here, which is why I asked questions rather than said anything. I was quite surprised at the reaction of some of the other committees to the large red blocks in their area, that they didn't seem to be as inquisitive perhaps as I'm used to this committee being. Perhaps we've been very lucky, we've had very, very good and thorough KPIs before, and hence, you would have detected some, I don't think disappointment is quite the right word, but some thoughts that some of the detail was not here that we had normally expected to receive, but perhaps that's a function that this committee has really continued from the previous incarnation, whereas some of the others have actually changed their, what they were actually scrutinising, and they are more fragmented, put together to make the other three, whereas this one perhaps has some continuity to it and therefore some quite long history. Looking at the recommendation which is here, I would suggest that, well, first of all, we're very lucky, we are the only committee with no reds in our little blogs or our circles, our pie charts, so generally, I think we're going to be quite pleased with the performance of our service areas, and I think that should be part of our recommendation. For the rest of the recommendation, I think, rather than have a recommendation that runs to a page of thoughts and things, we will just leave it that we will put forward to the chief executive our thoughts in a different forum, and I would suggest that then, at the next coordinating board, we discuss this and see, you know, how it moves forward, and try and bring the comments from the various committees together, because quite rightly, Tom, you say you don't want one committee going in one direction and one committee going in another, so we need to bring their thoughts together in something that works for you as management, but also is going to work for the other committees. But I, perhaps I'm used to a fairly questioning committee here and interested in the debate, but I was quite surprised at the lack of comment that this aroused in all three of the other committees. I expected, good or bad, I didn't know, but I expected more comment, and it was really very passively received, which obviously overjoyed you, but actually surprised me.
So, chairman, and obviously you and I actually sat next to each other in some of those meetings, didn't we?
Yes.
Yeah, I thought there were several very good comments made actually in all of the committees, so I don't think it was entirely passive, I probably hear what you say there with a certain amount of tongue in cheek there, I'll say, chairman, a little bit. So, there were some very constructive comments from each of the committees, but certainly not as searching perhaps as this evening, but again, that's fine. I think also it probably reflects that, obviously, the housing function in this council is a very substantial part of this business, and it's also increasingly, well, over the years it has now been in borough and district councils, an unusual part of council business. So, it's quite right that you as the committee focusing on housing give that special attention, and it's also quite appropriate if we want it to, for the performance report to reflect that. So, I'm not at all perturbed by the discussion, and I don't suppose I was necessarily overjoyed by any of the other discussions either, but I thought all were constructive, all moving in the right direction, I'm very happy with your suggestion that we take it through the coordinating board. As I just really want to underline, I do want to make it work for you as well as for us, and I think, yes, there's a certain element of trying to, you know, perhaps get to grips with something a little bit different, but my reflection comparing with previous reports is, as long as we can find it, so that's the job for us presentationally, I think actually there's a lot of content and weight here, and for my purposes anyway, looking at those reports, as somebody who's kind of lived with a year of the previous performance reports that was otherwise coming to them fresh, was that this gives a lot more meaning for the observer who perhaps is less familiar with the organisation, and gives more of a story as to how we're doing from quarter to quarter throughout the year. But, you know, I'm sure we can meet all of these objectives quite happily.
Right, thank you, Raj. Any final comments from the committee? So, basically, the recommendation is that we are pleased with the performance of our service area, we will take some comments offline till the chief executive on format, and we will bring it back to the coordinating committee for final. So, are we content with that? Thank you very much, everybody. Now it's showtime. It is the government's green paper, A New Deal for Social Housing, presented by Annalisa.
Okay, thank you. Hopefully, I will be swift and prompt and engaging, because you're not tiring, are you, you're ready to go? Okay, so you've received a paper, and I've done a presentation to support the report I sent you, the government green paper came out on the 14th of August, was a little bit hidden in the middle of the school holidays. Since then, we've had an opportunity to speak to Hugh and Andrew and councillor Ping as well. So, what I want to take you through today is to give you a summary of the green paper, to discuss your opportunities to input into Waverley's response to the consultation, and also, because it's so broad reaching, I think there's suggested areas for you as a scrutiny group to look at in the future as well. So, the background of the paper is based in a couple of key areas, you're all aware, sadly, of the fire in Grenfell Tower 12 months ago, it's sad to say, but people have died for this green paper to come to us, and I think that's something that everybody needs to bear in mind. The paper's based around the ministerial roadshows that happened after Grenfell, and nationally out of those roadshows, we found that some tenants feel ignored and stigmatised in their homes, and also that some landlords are perceived to be remote and unaccountable and uninterested in their tenants. Hopefully, most of you will remember the presentation I gave on the Chartered Institute of Housing, Rethinking Social Housing, at the beginning of the last meeting, and also it's also reflected of the white paper that was issued last year. And just to give you a little bit of context, because I'm not sure of the knowledge of all of the members of the group, it also talks about the role of the regulator in social housing. So, in February 2017, the Homes Community Agency split, sorry, the Homes Community Agency with, no, start again, White Paper was February 17, Homes and Communities Agency was split in January 18 into Homes England, that you'll have heard Andrew talk about, that grant funding and new affordable housing, and also into the regulator for social housing, which hasn't had a big fanfare and isn't that really well known outside of social housing nerds like myself and you. So, there's two corporate identities, and the objectives of the housing regulator were all based in the Housing Regeneration Act in 2008, and really, their objective is to make sure that social housing is viable, effective and well governed, and that's an area that came out of the ministerial roadshows about that accountability and governance and tenants being able to hold their landlords into account. So, the regulator has consumer standards which are applied to all social housing providers, including local authorities, and those are based around tenant involvement, home, tenancy and neighbourhood and community management. So, that was a brief background. The paper itself, as I said, was launched on 14th of August, there were a few headlines, but I think most people were in recess mode. The five principles of the paper are firstly to ensure homes are safe and decent, and this comes out of the wish to ensure that all the Hackett recommendations following the Grenfell Tower are adopted. It's also looking at the effective resolution for complaints, from the roadshows, there was a real feeling that tenants didn't know or how to make a complaint, or how to escalate a complaint, or how to get a listen to. The third principle's about empowering residents and strengthening the regulator, so tenants can hold their landlord to account, they've got the information, they know what the KPIs are, they know what the standard is, they know when their landlord's failing, and also for the regulator to get more teeth to address some of the issues that might have been occurring with different social landlords. Fourthly, the report talks a lot about tackling stigma, and this really echoes what we talked about before with the CIN, just rethinking social housing, what's it here for, who's it for, how can we promote it, and also to celebrate the communities that we've got in social housing. And fifthly, building on the white paper, it's about expanding supply and affordable housing and supporting home ownership.
Yes, it should be pride.
Oh dear.
That was designed to make sure it was still. councillor Goodrich spotted it, I didn't.
councillor Goodrich, I'm going to give you everything of mine for us in the future. Oh, what have I done there, sorry. I once said I've got condone, condone mixed up on the slide as well, that was pretty bad. So, within the report, I went through the questions, I gave you a copy of all the questions, just picking out some of the most relevant consultation questions, I think maybe for you, is about making sure homes are safe, so adopting the Hackett review recommendations, potentially adopting the new private rented sector measures, looking at the decent home definition, I think there's a real piece of work there about what do we minimise decent homes, what should that be? So, Waverley's got commitment through our housing revenue business plan, our asset management strategy and our tenancy agreement, but we really recognise the limitations of the current decent home standard. In chapter two, we're looking at effectiveness of complaints, so the questions that the government are asking about, how could we improve mediation, should we continue with the democratic filter, so once you've gone through, in social housing, once you've gone through the organisation's complaint process, you can go to an MP, a tenants designated complaints panel, or a councillor to seek a local solution to your problem, or you can wait eight weeks to go to the housing enforcement. So, should people be able to go straight to the housing enforcement, should they come to the designated persons, how could that be improved, and how can we resolve issues locally? And also, how can we promote access to complaints, make sure people know what to do? I think what the ministers heard on the roadshows were people were consistently making approaches and being fobbed off, for want of a better expression, and I'm sure you've all seen with the Grenfell Tower, that residents have been complaining for years about their concerns about health and safety in the building. Chapter three, looking at resident empowerment and strengthening the regulator, we want to ensure that landlords are held to account, I think we're quite lucky within local authority that you are held to account because we have the democratic process. In housing associations, there's no direct accountability in that way. So, the government's looking at key performance indicators, you may have seen the headlines about league tables for social housing, has that helped, worked in schools, has it worked in hospitals, will it work in social housing? Looked at choices over services, so tenant management organisations, looking at community-based housing, looking at different ways to maybe deliver services, and also to review the consumer regulation. So, at the moment, the housing regulator will only get involved and take steps if there's a serious detriment to tenants, is that threshold too high, is it too low, what else could trigger that? So, we welcome the opportunity within the green paper to feed into raising standards across the whole sector for social housing. Looking at chapter four, stigma, we support neighbourhood competitions, we are constantly looking at our custom service, the professionalism of our housing offices, we've currently got 23 members of staff who are registered with the Chartered Institute of Housing, and we're looking to improve on that, and these questions also relate to social value and antisocial behaviour, the government's looking for our views on. So, I hope, I've got one smile, so that's good. So, out of all the green paper, there's two things that we need to decide today within the next eight minutes, and that is how you as a committee would like to feedback into the consultation response. We've given you the questions, we have now met and created a draft version of our response, but we'd really like to get your feedback into that, so that may be another meeting or some kind of online consultation discussion. But also, I thought, there's such a breadth of information in the green paper that one of the things that really kind of came out to us, because it reflected what we talked about with the it reflected what we talked about with the CIH Rethinking Social Housing, is a potential scrutiny review that you could do, is how can member engagement tackle stigma in social housing? So look within Waverley, what are the perceptions in Waverley? Do tenants feel stigmatized? Do the general public have a view about council housing? What are the levels of stigma? How can we tackle it? And then create an action plan. I think, if I remember this sketch correctly, but I don't have my grandfather anymore to go back to, is that potentially a lot of stigma is actually unconscious bias, and some people might think they're doing the right thing, but actually the way they're delivering service or the way they're engaging with somebody is not very helpful. And this is all in the arena of, you know, we've seen a lot of stigma on TV. This has been a decade. I think councillor Ford mentioned one of these shows earlier, you know, it really has seen the TV genre of poverty porn, you know, Benefit Street, Council House crackdown, How to Get a Council House, all those really bad press images. The positive thing is that nationally, the Moripole that the CIH did, did show that there's an appetite to improve that reputation. They think that the negative view that people have in social housing is unfair. This is a real opportunity there to do that. And there's also a campaign at the moment called See the Person, which essentially tries to challenge the stigma of people in social housing. And if you bear with me, I would just like to show you, if I can remember how to do this. Oh, it's disappeared. If we have a look at these little people. So we pray that the video works. Oh, we've got them.
And if you go to the bottom right of the screen, the speaking image, it's called Red Cross over it.
We have subtitles, so. So that's a quick illustration to show you that there is other campaigns out there that are trying to tackle stigma in social housing. And I think there's a real opportunity for us to do something constructive in Waverley.
Thank you very much. Councillors, members of the committee, comments, questions?
Councillor Goodrich. I must say, when I read the report, and you saw the different headings that were suggested, you sort of felt, well, to a large extent, Waverley are doing this. I mean, the philosophy that we have in housing in Waverley seems to follow very much the government's philosophy about what we should be doing. Now, we can always improve. We talked about standardised decent homes and so on. But a lot of the stuff that's been recommended seemed to me of what we should be doing, we're doing it already to a large extent. But that doesn't mean we can't improve. So I would imagine that our responses to the questionnaire are going to be largely in the positive rather than disagreeing. How we then deal with the questions, I would have thought we could do it online as the suggested answers. In a way, it would be helpful to have actually had, in our papers today, considered the questions with a blank, actually a draft reply so we could have a look at it. But you know, we would have been here all night.
No, and unfortunately, the timing of the committee's night of the listen.
Didn't work.
Because this was down.
And I agree that it's a good idea with stigma. I'm not sure how much stigma there is in Waverley, but Adrian May.
Seriously?
It's extreme.
Extreme?
Yeah. Well, let's sort it out.
How?
Tackling regulation is still a great idea.
That's why we need to have a scrutiny job on it.
Fifty years' time.
Well, I like to be optimistic. And if we then try and tackle it, accepting there's a problem, then let us try and deal with it. Therefore, I see in a very positive way that we could actually do something, because there shouldn't be a stigma, of course. So I was quite encouraged by the white paper and the report. I must feel the same, certainly when I read it. I felt, yeah, well, we're doing most of that. And that's our philosophy too. And yes, there's nothing much in this that I disagree with, yes, surprisingly. Because some of the stuff that the government have come out with, I was getting very hot under the collar. But this one, I felt quite good. Adrian, do you want?
Yeah, it's a joint effort, if I may, with Terry, the vice chair, on the chair. I've just got a quick comment. I mean, the TP welcomes the green paper, which I think's definitely a step forward of the five principles on page 126, which Annalisa mentioned. Terry?
Yeah, just to repeat really that all tenants will support and welcome any programme or any policy that improves our lives and works and all of that, and particularly the five headings that we've had there. What we've done on our own back is we're actually attending a HQN, which is the Residents Network Conference in October. And it is actually helped to discuss this paper. So hopefully, we'll come back from that with more understanding of this paper than we actually have at the moment. But, you know, as a tenant, I do believe that Waverley do try very hard. There are issues that we need to change. We need to work through. There is the stigma problem. I think that's fairly... It's been there for a long, long time, and it's getting better. But, you know, we welcome the paper, and we'll help as much as we can.
Councillors. First off, it is a bit sad that it took something like Grenfell to prompt a green paper to actually highlight things that most people already knew, I think, anyway. So I think that's worth saying. The comment on stigma, there are parts of this borough where the idea of saying there's no stigma, I can't really engage with that point particularly constructively, because I find it so completely against what I see in my own ward. We talk about engagement from members in a consultation. I think the thing I would also highlight, there are some places we need engagement by members in their wards. Because, I mean, my ward, for example, the stigma of social housing, they have not seen their councillor in four years, five years, more than that. So it's actually engagement by members as well as it is in this sort of consultation process. And I think we need something, either a meeting, some kind of online portal, something to allow us to engage with this, because I think it's a really important thing. And the stigma side of it is the absolute most important thing, because I agree with the other comments, Waverley is broadly in line with the other things that this green paper is actually trying to do, except for the stigma side of it, which is ridiculous in some parts of the ward. That's all for me. Thanks, John. Councillors, here you are.
Thank you, chairman. Yeah, the stigma thing, I absolutely agree with. I mean, irrespective of what's here now, we have a major issue in this borough with lack of accommodation where people can live to do basic, very important basic jobs, teachers, nurses, et cetera. And if they're told that they have to come to Waverley and that they'll have to live in social housing, and they have any kind of stigma notion attached to that, then it's going to be a negative factor. We need to get rid of that, because we desperately need these people to come and help our borough tick over. So, yeah, I think Annalisa, you know, it's a whole and one there. It's just one of the things that... I looked at the things that we could possibly do. Stigma came out, and yeah, I'm totally behind doing something around that. Thank you.
Councillors, it's going to come up under Work Programme, so. Any more comments, councillors? Okay, committee work programme is next. The recommendation is in... Sorry?
Sorry.
Sorry, one comment, please.
Could we just confirm the best way forward? Well, A, does the committee want feedback into our consultation response? And B, do you want to do that individually or collectively? I can happily circulate the draft consultation response we've created, but equally, I'm happy to meet with the resident, sorry, the committee as well.
Okay. Yes, I think we would like to see, it's easier to amend something you can see rather than start from scratch.
And I do apologise.
Of course, start from scratch will never get anywhere. So, I mean, the recommendation is in three parts. One, it notes the scope and theme to the consultation paper. Well, I think that's fair enough to agree with it. Provides feedback on the consultation questions. And there, I would say, yes, please, can we have your draft responses sent to the whole committee? And we'll reply on email. I don't see that we need a meeting for it. And then you, perhaps in consultation with myself and the vice chair, can sort of win over down the responses and make something that makes sense. Is that agreed, everybody?
Agreed.
Chair, the draft comments were set up Andrew, Annalisa and councillor King.
Yep. Yes, okay. And three, considers and identifies, suggests scrutiny for the future work programme. We'll cover that under Work Programme, but stigma clearly is going to be one of them by the responses round the table. Are we content with that as recommendation three?
Absolutely.
Okay. Right, so we'll move smoothly into committee work programme. Yasmin?
Thank you, chairman. One minute by that shop, but I'll try and keep it brief.
I doubt you're going to make that.
So work programme is on page 150, yeah, starting from 150 in your general papers. So we've got the tenants' items, which are on this agenda for November. We've got the Health Inequalities Report, a section on the housing elements. A lot of understanding there, housing inequalities, report findings related to housing. So I think that will be worthwhile bringing to this committee. So that's on there for November. We've also got an item on Home for Homelessness Reduction Act 2017. So the idea was to bring it to this committee to inform the committee of how that's impacted Waverley. So that's on there for November. We've also got Waverley Scrutiny Group Recharges Report Progress Update. So members will remember that the Waverley Scrutiny Group brought a report on recharges, they did a review and a report on recharges, and which had a number of recommendations for Waverley and the housing team. So that's something that we're coming in November along with an update on how far officers have got with those, implementing those agreed recommendations. I've been updated this evening that the Waverley, at the top of page 152, the Waverley Scrutiny Group will be bringing the Mutual Exchanges Report also to November. So that's, I'll change the TBC on the day for consideration to November. I picked up, there's been a lot of discussion this evening, this evening about, well, for example, communal areas and privately owned housing. So I've picked up those comments, and I've picked up that committee members want to see that come back, so I can talk to officers about how we bring that back in the future. I've picked up the request about affordable rents information, and took you from the council follows. And the rent policy, as Hugh's already outlined, there's a few changes to be made there, and it'll come back to the committee just to, whether that's by a committee meeting, those changes will be made, and the committee will see that again. Other than that, oh, and one thing I did miss off for November is the corporate performance report. So whatever shape or form that takes in quarter two, that will be on November's agenda as well. But I'm happy to receive any, that's quite a substantial agenda for November. However, I'm happy to receive any other suggestions. And just picking up on the tackling stigma that we've just talked about, if members would like to set up a working group to tackle this group, that'll be supported by myself and obviously the housing officers. So I'm happy to see that through, and Poonaw, as the Democratic Services Officer. So if that's something the committee agrees to do, then we can definitely set that up. Thank you.
Comments, councillors?
Yeah, there's one item that's out there that doesn't appear to have resurfaced, and that's an update on the renewal and replacement of the maintenance contracts. There's some big items there.
We'll have a discussion on that. I think we will be ready for the next committee.
No, no, whenever's appropriate.
Yeah, I think into the new year, we'll be two months forward due to the new contract to start, and we would have a full mobilisation plan being implemented. So I think in the new year.
Thank you.
Councillor, any more comments? So the thought is that we should have a working group looking at how we can, I'm trying to steep the right verb here.
Address.
Address, probably. Overcome might be too higher aim.
I imagine it might be in this council, yes.
But how we can address the stigma associated with social housing, whatever the latest word is that we're going to call it, and maybe one of the main things is to call it something different, but that doesn't achieve anything other than helping a little. Who would like to be on it?
Certainly bothers it.
One, two, three, four. No, I'm just looking round the table, but I'll stare at you if you're laughing.
Yes, no, I'm quite happy to come on. Otherwise, we seem to have a lot of preconceptions before this start. We have a range of views.
Councillor's gone.
Well, we push her on that.
Liz could be vomited, I'm sure.
Yeah, yeah. I definitely saw her move over there.
Yeah. But if I could say, as a ward member with Liz, that actually, this is a subject I'm very interesting and interested in, but in our ward, you can almost count the number of Waverley properties on two hands. And that's the whole of a large ward. So whether it would be more beneficial for other people to, who have a better representation, I don't know.
You have to squeeze the arm behind the back. But at the moment, sorry, Carico.
Well, I just wanted to say something in defence of the good residents of, well, maybe Farnham, maybe it's not Waverley. But we're out to consultation, as you know, for a partial review of our Act 14. John's been with me at some of these events we've done, and people are demanding social housing. And I don't mean, you know, they're actually worried that we're not producing it. So this idea that there's a stigma, they're only agreeing with my sights or the sights we've put forward if I can assure them that there's social housing going on it. So, you know, where we've got this idea that nobody wants social housing anywhere near them, you know, the residents of Farnham, and I don't mean tenants necessarily, are actually telling us in this neighbourhood plan to get your social housing in. So, you know, I don't see the whole of Waverley as being antisocial housing at all. I just don't have a cross at our throat.
I don't think that's what we're saying.
Well, no, but you're saying there's a stigma, and you're saying that there's a stigma across the borough, and it's a huge stigma that needs addressing. I'm saying there are pockets of this borough where we have social housing, and the residents are not stigmatized.
Then join us on the working group and we can discuss it.
Yes, well, I said, you know, my patch, there are, Councillors, but I don't think there is any stigma in Warwick. We've built some new social houses, and we've been very well-received by our village, including the people who are in them.
People don't tend to be very forthcoming about communicating it to people, other people, though, that's all.
Well, I've been around and spoken.
Okay, so we have, I think, enough volunteers to make a working group. I will leave it to you to nominate a chairman. Outside this meeting, if you so wish.
Do that inside this meeting.
Yeah, okay. And Yasmin will chase you and get things going. Anything else?
None for me.
Okay, we do not need to exclude members of the public because it's highly confidential. But can we add to the minutes, please? The current date of the next meeting is, I believe, the 27th of November. Can we stick that on the minute so that it's circulated for all to see? And apart from that, I'm terribly sorry for overrunning.
Shame.
Yes, it is. Everyone else was shorter than us.
I think we should put something into the best charity.
Absolutely, yes. Every single person who spoke this evening.
Oh, dear.
Now, well, thank you very much, everybody. Meeting is now closed.
Thank you.